The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this included in decision making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comments on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the committee. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comments regarding non-agenda items this evening. If anyone has a comment on a non-agenda item, please approach the microphone and provide your name and address prior to making your statement.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Holland, 764 North 119th Street, Waldorf Plaza. I guess we all know why I'm here. This is to address any issue or message of interest to all students of Underwood. I'm sure you received the email I sent each one of you. I hope you took the time to review it. Thank you. I hope you had the time to review it. And I want to thank those of you who responded. At this time, the question that the community of Underwood Elementary is, how does this change benefit the Underwood community? How does this change fit within the district goal of providing students at both schools with the best environment in which to expand? As far as we're concerned, we have a great principal at Underwood. Mr. Leach is highly competent, personable. I'm sure not everybody has that opinion of him, and that's fine. He's there to do a job and do it well. So, you know, if he's there to base everybody, I guess he would be doing a great job. I don't agree with him on that either. But I hear from parents that were involved in the process of when he was hired, that one thing they liked about him was that he was willing to commit to our community on a long-term basis. And we understand that there's room for improvement everywhere, in every aspect of life. But it's hard to understand how you can improve on what we have right now. We have a great principal that continues to develop great things in our community. So, it's not like we need fresh blood in our school right now. It's not that we have a principal with adequate ideas and that is obsolete and stale. So, once again, the question is, how does this change benefit Underwood? Taking away all the speculation going around, all the gossip, all the conspiracy theories, we want just a clear answer. A well-thought-out answer, not an answer that says all this to get this out of the way. But an answer that explains, how is it that, how do you plan for this to improve our community? As someone who works in the corporate world, and more so in healthcare, I understand the issues of confidentiality. And there's confidentiality involved also with personal decisions. I understand that. Then, I guess it's the job of the district to figure out a way to balance between giving the citizens a good explanation of why things are happening and still maintaining that confidentiality. And I want to leave you tonight with one more thought. Almost three years ago, I stood in front of you, and I thanked you at that time for taking the step, a step forward in regaining the trust of the people of this district. Well, that trust is a little valuable now. And it's because of the impression and the appearance that the administration gives of making these decisions surrounded by a small cloud. So, what is it that the district is going to do to fix these glitches? What is it that it's going to do to give the impression that things are transparent and that you are giving us the respect and wisdom? I just want to leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Is there any further community comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Jane Carroll. I live at 3309 North Noel Terrace in Waldorf Plaza, and I'm also an Underwood parent. My son is in fourth grade at Underwood, and this next year, he will be under his fourth principal at Underwood School since he started in June 2011. As you may recall, when this board switched, it changed its mind about closing Wilson, Underwood lost its principal at that point, a fairly young, new hire who'd only been there for a year or maybe two years. And now, for this switch to happen again with no communication to the parents, it's really not fair to the Underwood community. We're just asking for a little explanation, a little reason for why you would again take a principal away from a school. And really, there doesn't seem to be any long-term planning involved. So, just a little explanation would be greatly appreciated from this board. Thank you.
I know someone who recognizes me. I'm Esther Moore, 523 North 115th Street. I have a daughter at Woodin and a daughter in fourth grade. I know my husband, Dr. Erdel. He knows them well and has copied all of you. I am extremely disappointed. Five years ago, I stood before you. We were facing this issue, and I made myself, and I was in his dinner chair for two hours. I was before you five years ago, talking about this exact same issue, when Christie Of course, there would be let go, and you were bringing the principal from Wilson to our school. And I was very disappointed at that time. I cannot believe that you're choosing to, and I know things, I know it's a done deal. I know you can't fight City Hall or school boards. I just feel I need to let you know how disappointed I am when I stood here and told me there would be longevity. My husband was on the hiring committee for Mike Fleitch, and he spent a lot of time. One of his questions, when he was interviewing candidates with longevity, we have gone through principal after principal after principal. My eighth-grade daughter has gone through three principals. My fourth-grade daughter, like Jane, fourth principal. I look to each of you who have kids in school, Mr. See, Mr. Ray, Dr. Erdel, and I'd like to tell me, how many different principals have your children had? I feel that's a very fair question, because I don't think one of you, from what I know, have gone through the number of principals that we have. I have to be honest, I really would, when comments are done, would like to know the answer. It's unfortunate that, and it's not a very appropriate chart, but we're getting a shaft. Once again, you are changing principals in Underwood, and I just, I'm really disappointed. I mean, if I could, I'd move my daughter up to Woodin, because I wish she didn't have to have a fourth principal. I know there's reasons, and I know there's lots of changes going on with principals, but I need to, once again, tell you how extremely disappointed I am in the Board. And, Dr. Erdel, you're a great person, but I'm extremely disappointed in the choices you've made, the choice you've made to make another change again, because that was something you and Mike Fleitch, he's not so assured of. We would not have that situation again. And so, I would like to know from each of you who still have kids in school, how many principals your kids have had. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Felice Jacobson. I'm the Underwood PTE president. I wanted to, wanted to kind of put a little bit more of a positive address to this board on behalf of Underwood. I have a first grader at Underwood, and the two years that I've been working with Mike Fleitch, he's been a wonderful principal. And I can certainly understand your decision if you need to utilize him elsewhere. And I do think that the number of principals that we've had at Underwood is a testament to the parent community that we have at Underwood. And I think that all of us as parents would like to be on board with the school board in their decisions. But I think that, in order for us to do that, to help our entire community of our children, we would just like to be informed before the decisions are made, so that we can prepare as a parent network, we can prepare our children, and we can see what the school board is planning and how these changes that we're going to be going through will be affecting our children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Soderoy. I'm an Underwood parent also. We actually moved out of the Waldorf Plaza School District and moved into another district. And we open enrolled our daughter and our student to be a son because of the structure that Underwood is under. Our daughter is very, very upset that Mr. Leach is leaving, and she's going to be a fifth grader. And we also have someone from K4, our son, coming in. And the reason that we chose Underwood is because of how Mr. Leach runs that school. It's just, it's very sad.
Is there any further community comment at this time?
My name is Jennifer Brown. I'm at 2782 North Hartland in Milwaukee. I'm an open enrollment Underwood parent. Underwood is a great community. We love it. It's wonderful the way it is. One of the problems with the school that I've heard from parents, we've been fortunate to have one principal in the short time that we've been there, but parents have really made a lot of comments about the amount of changes that our students have gone through in the past. I feel that the communication that we've gotten regarding this change is very ambiguous. We don't feel very confident that Ms. Keith will be with Underwood on a long-term basis. There's no communication at all. So, I think a lot of us are sitting back wondering, is this a permanent move, or in another two to three years, are we expecting another change for our children? I understand priorities change, things change, but these are our kids, and, you know, it's a huge change for them, and they have someone who knows them, they trust, trusts them, and they have to have this change every few years.
Is there any further community comments at this time? Would anyone else be willing to answer?
First of all, I guess I'd just like to make a couple of comments. And I could probably talk with all of you, and I know I made that offer, and I'd be happy to do it. This probably isn't the right form to have, well, it's not the right form to have discussion. I'd be happy to meet with any, all of the Underwood parents that have concerns and thought through it. You're correct in a lot of the things you're saying. There are, there are issues when you're dealing with personnel, and it's going to come across and seem somewhat vague. I also look at, I look at it from a different perspective. As a superintendent, I look at it much differently than I do as a parent. As a parent, it's about Eisenhower School for me. As a superintendent, it's about all of our schools. And taking our administrative team and trying to put them based upon my evaluation of their skills, their strengths, their areas of improvement, and putting them where they're going to have the greatest impact in the district. And where we're going to get the most growth, where they're going to grow the most, I don't look at any of our schools and say, we're even close to good enough to where we want to be. We need to continue to improve, and there's a lot of ways to do it. This isn't about taking somebody, two different principals that are not performing. There is no smoking gun. There's no, I'm not going to lay out and say, well, this person did this, because there isn't anything. These are two high-performing principals, and when I look at the total organization and making this change, it's about growth at both schools for all kids. And I, I understand relationships with principals, kids' relationships with principals, and how they look to them. One thing I would ask you is to give it some time and make the judgment afterward. I think it's hard to judge what it's going to be like. I too went through a principal change as a parent as well, and, you know, my, my interactions are much different from as a parent and how I looked at it. And I, I took time to wait to judge. I had some beliefs beforehand, but I also waited it out. And I think in any situation, that's what you have to do to give it a shot. That sounds to downfall your concerns, but like I said, I would welcome the opportunity. As I shared with, I believe, one or two of you in the email, that I'd be happy to meet with you and discuss it further as well.
We'll move on at this time to the recognitions portion, oh, excuse me, the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which board members would like to renew for separate discussion or action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. For the record, the check register is present if anyone wishes to do it. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda, board members? Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, which is vocal? Mr. Crowder? Yes. Mrs. Hilldo? Yes. Mrs. Randall? Yes. Mr. Ray? Yes. Mrs. Flaver? Yes. Now, we will come to recognitions. The Woodin Middle School Forensics Team captured first-place team honors in the large school category of the Middle Level Forensics Association State Tournament on March 27, and several members of the team won individual trophies. The 58-member team was recognized at the April 19th meeting. The Wisconsin Middle Level Forensics Association is an organization of middle schools which gives students the opportunity to have common opening including their speeches abilities. The team advisors are Joel Vois and Lucy Getz. Four of the team members, eighth graders Nolan Presnick, Terry Coon, and Ellie Anderson, and seventh grader Maddie Carroll are here to present their speeches. Please come forward at this time. They'll introduce themselves. All right. Thank you, Gabriel Gray. This is Katia Ries, Moonley, and Ellie. They'll do that.
Well, we did news reporting for forensics this year. A pretty challenging category, actually. We have to rewrite our script every two weeks, and so basically everything for competition we do. And this script we are performing today is from State, so it may be a little outdated if that is not.
WPGW, your world news. We deliver your world to you, the things you care about and believe in. I'm Phyllis White.
And I'm Wendelin Moore.
Good evening. We begin with our daily guide on what's going on around the world. North Korea announced that they would no longer move forward with nuclear disarmament. The announcement was made by an official Korean Central News Agency, or KCNA. North Korea also announced it would no longer abide by the ceasefire that brought troops to the Korean War.
The two Koreas are still technically, technically at war because the Korean War did not end in a peace treaty. North Korea argues that South Korea violated this agreement by participating in military cooperation with the United States. Currently, the US has 28,000 troops in South Korea to support their military. We'll keep you updated on this growing conflict. Now, we turn to our correspondent in Alabama. So, Phyllis, what's the weather? What's the weather? What's the weather like this week? Tell us, Phyllis, what's the weather? What's the weather like this week?
Hi, Gwen. I'm here reporting in Birmingham, Alabama, and the rain is coming down hard. I can feel the wind just breezing through my hair. It's shifting my umbrella, and there's also very severe hail.
Yikes, Phyllis. Take cover.
Will do, Gwen.
Hurry. I see some large hail headed your way.
Okay, Gwen. I'm safe. Bringing out our travel map and taking a look at the rest of the country, we can see that the rain isn't just here in Alabama. We're seeing rain out west, in California, Washington State, and out east. Earlier this week, we saw rain in Texas, but due to the high-pressure system, that rain has moved here to Alabama. Flying north to Wisconsin and Rylanda, tomorrow, we see partly cloudy skies with a high of 45 degrees. In our capital city of Madison, we see a 20% chance of rain with a high of 51 degrees. Close to home in Milwaukee, we see a 20% chance of rain as well with a high of 49 degrees. Let's take a look at our three-day forecast. On Sunday, we see a 20% chance of rain with a high of 49 degrees and a low of 36. By Monday, we'll finally have sunny skies with a high of 46 degrees and a low of 30. By Tuesday, sunny skies again with a high of 57 and a low of 32. Spring has finally sprung, just not here.
Looks like we're breaking up. Sorry for the technical difficulties, viewers. As we wait for Phyllis to return to the studio, we turn to a more local side of news. Talgo, a Spanish train-making company, has formerly gone unknown until they've decided to bring dozens of new jobs here to Milwaukee. At the Old Tower Automotive site in Milwaukee, train manufacturer Talgo Incorporated will build two 14-car, high-speed trains for the Chicago-Milwaukee line and possibly from Milwaukee to Madison. Wisconsin has received $810 million in federal stimulus money from the Obama administration.
Wisconsin isn't only benefiting from Talgo. Ingateen, another Spanish company, is also opening factories in Milwaukee to produce wind-powered parts. Milwaukee plans to sell eight acres of the Nomi Valley to Ingateen so they will be able to make generators for wind turbines. Ingateen's job goal is to create 275 new jobs by 2015. These new ideas will greatly impact Milwaukee's economy for the years to come. Now, let's head to our sports desk. Wendelin?
Thanks, Phyllis. Let's start with soccer.
Soccer? It's the middle of basketball season.
That it is, but for World Cup 2010, which will be held in South Africa, there are less than 90 days until this anticipated event. This is the first World Cup to be held on the entire continent of Africa. There is one player, though, who will definitely be missing out on this experience. David Beckham, a household name all around the world, will most likely be appearing on the world stage this year. Beckham ruptured his left Achilles tendon last week during a game of AC Milan. This is a huge loss for the entire England national team, because experts say that after the surgery, it will take at least three months before Beckham will be able to run again. And now, to the main event. Here at the WPGW station, we're going mad with March Madness. After this weekend, we'll be down to the final four.
I hate to say this, Gwen, but I really don't understand how the whole March Madness thing works.
Well, Phyllis, for you and any other viewers out there who really don't understand the basics of March Madness, I'll give you a rundown of the basics. Let's take a gander at my bracket, which I have handy right here. We start with 64 teams from colleges all across the nation, already ranked by how good they are according to each region, which are the Midwest, West, East, and South. Each time there's a game, the winner moves on to the next round. Now, we're down to the Sweet Sixteen. However, all these teams will be battling it out for spots in the regionals, where they again will be fighting it out for spots in the semifinals or the final four. That's all for today, but definitely keep tuned in to the WPGW station for the best sports coverage any station could offer. Back to you, Phyllis.
Thanks, Gwen. In our last broadcast, we discussed how the US Postal Service may be cutting Saturday from their mail service. They claim that cutting Saturday would take more than $3 billion annually. Now, we turn to our correspondent outside the post office in Milwaukee. Wendelin?
Thanks, Phyllis. It was a nice, slack beat, but the USPS does plan to proceed with this, making snail mail even slower. To get another side of this, we turn to familiar face and many of your community. Many of you have probably seen your dog bricking for a treat from Marcia, a mail carrier in Wabatoa. Hello, Wendelin. Now, Marcia, what do you think of cutting Saturday from the mail service?
I think cutting Saturday would definitely get us out of the hole we've dug ourselves into. Aside from that, I have to say, getting an extra day would make for extra time to spend with my loving family.
You do bring up a good point, that some people think getting rid of Saturday mail would contribute to an even slower mail service. What would you like to say to our viewers who agree with this?
Well, Wendelin, in our day and age, if you need to get a hold of someone that badly, why not just use the computer or a telephone?
I agree. The WPGW station would like to personally thank you for all of your years of service.
Thank you, but I better get back to delivering all of these letters.
Thanks again. This April will mark Marcia's 20th year delivering mail in the Milwaukee area. She is also delivering mail in Indiana, Illinois, and Michigan. Way to go, Marcia. Back to you, Phyllis.
Thanks, Wendelin. And now, to our weekly editorial. Bear in mind that this is not the station management's opinion, but our own.
The newest addition to the Disney princess family has given girls from different cultures new confidence. The Princess and the Frog features an African-American princess named Tiana. Tiana is not your average damsel in distress and is an excellent role model to many of our young princesses.
But have the princesses of the past shown these same qualities? We would argue no. According to Time Magazine Online, it wasn't until 1989 that Disney debuted The Little Mermaid's Ariel, a princess less passive and more defiant. But Ariel also gave up her beautiful voice for a pair of legs, just so she could be with a man, who of course is a prince who rescued her in the act.
In another example, Sleeping Beauty spends most of her time in a light coma, waiting for a prince to wake her up. Do we really want our young girls to think they have to wait for a man to rescue them? What about their independence?
We suggest, if you are a parent at home, to talk to your daughters about the importance of being a strong woman. It is crucial for your daughters to grow up learning to be independent, not waiting around for a prince to save them.
Well, that wraps up today's WPGW Your World News.
We deliver your world to you, the things you care about and believe in. Good night.
Next up, we have Maddie Carroll, and she was in the category of storytelling.
Hi, I'm Madeline Carroll, and I was in storytelling, like she said. And in storytelling, you have to memorize a children's book that's five to eight minutes long, and then present it using no props, exciting voices, just to make the story come alive. The relationship between a cat and a mouse has never been that complex, until now. Usually, it's just the average cat-chase-mouse team. But Tessa the Mouse and Oscar the Cat, in the book, Tessa's Tip-Tapping Toes by Caroline Creamy, have their own way to pass time. Tessa was built to dance. She had swinging arms, skipping feet, and tip-tapping toes. Most mice hurried and scurried among floorboards and luches, trying not to be seen. Not Tessa. She boogied, she bopped, she shimmyed, she hopped, she flapped as she bounced, but she never scurried. Tessa stopped wearing so. Her mother would scold. Tesla tried to stop with every ounce of her B-Rob and hip-hop and heart, but when her toes weren't tapping, they felt all wrong. At night, Tessa and her family raided Mrs. Timboni's kitchen, hunting for crumbs. But instead of purring and scurrying, Tessa juggled jelly beans and sashayed with saltshakers. She loved to tap dance across the teapot, wearing her bottle-cap slippers. But then, one day, Mrs. Timboni got a cat. His name was Oscar, and he loved to sing. Most cats curled up on fresh piles of laundry or dozed off on window sills. Not Oscar. He crooned on the kitchen counters, and sang in the sinks, and shrilled on the dining-room table. "Oscar, stop all that racket," cried Mrs. Timboni. Oscar tried to stop with every ounce of his sing-songy, hummingér of a heart, but when his tongue wasn't shrilling, he felt all wrong. As soon as Tessa's mother heard Oscar singing, she worried that the new cat would catch her dancing daughter. "You must be more careful," she told Tessa. "No more spinning, no leaping or jumping." "You must be more careful," she told Tessa. "No more spinning, no leaping or jumping. From now on, you will nap and chase mice, like a proper mouse." So Tessa hurried and scurried. She skittered and scampered. She stayed low to the ground, and she didn't make a sound. But it was hard, so hard. When she heard Oscar singing, she had to bite her tail to keep herself from dancing. Within a week, the neighbors called to complain about Oscar. Mrs. Timboni worried that they would ask her to get rid of her chorus and kiddy. "You must be more careful," she told Oscar. "No more singing, no crooning or caterwauling. From now on, you will nap and chase mice, like a proper cat." So Oscar napped until noon and dozed right through dinner. At night, he chased the hurrying and scurrying mice back into their holes. But it was hard, so hard. When he heard the skitter-scamper of little mice's feet, he had to bite his tongue to keep himself from singing. Then spring came. Dozens of daffodils danced in the yard, and green leaves rustled in the wind. "If only I could dance," thought Tessa. Oscar listened to the leaf swoosh. "If only I could sing," he thought. Then one night, Oscar was awakened by the ting, ting, ting of rain on the roof. His lips quivered, his teeth chattered, his tongue twitched, and his throat throbbed. Before he knew it, a song sprang out of his mouth. "Dooda-wop-wop, dooda-wop-wop," he sang. "Doolang-doo, lang-doolang." That same sliver of song wove its way into Tessa's dreams. Her tail curled, her fingers snapped, her head be-bopped, and her toes tip-tapped. Without opening her eyes, she walked towards the dancing sounds. The rain poured down harder and harder. Oscar sang louder and louder. "Diddle-diddle-dee, diddle-diddle-dee," he sang. Tessa frowned and frisked in time to his song. She danced round and round until she lost her balance and bumped into Oscar's football with a clatter. Suddenly, Tessa woke up. Oscar stopped singing. Cat and mouse stood staring at each other, always quiet except for the ting, ting, ting of rain on the roof. Only one thing came to Tessa's mind. Before Oscar could twitch a whisker, Tessa tip-tapped her toes in time to the rain. Oscar shook his head and blinked. Tessa wiggled her middle to a clap of thunder. Oscar's jaw dropped. Tessa burst into an all-out rock and roll, boogie-woogie, hip-hop two-step combo. Oscar watched, eyes wide. Finally, he cleared his throat, ahem, and melted out a loud tune, just right for dancing bees. Before long, Tessa's mother cracked fearfully out of her hole. "Tessa, stop," she pleaded. "He'll catch you." But Tessa couldn't hear her. She just kept dancing to Oscar singing. Mrs. Timboni rushed downstairs in her bathroom. "Oscar, stop," she pleaded. "The neighbors." But Oscar couldn't hear her. He just kept singing to Tessa's dancing. Before long, Tessa's mother's tail twitched. She tapped her tiny toes. Mrs. Timboni's throat itched. She hummed a little tune. Before long, everyone was singing and dancing in time to Oscar's song. By the time the neighbors called to complain, no one could even hear the phone ringing. They were too busy dancing hippity-hoppah and singing dood-a-wop-wop all night long.
Hello, I'm Nolan Krasnack, and I'm an eighth grader at Wimmin. And I do, uh, solo humorous acting, so that's what it sounds like. Okay. Kids these days take a lot for granted. Remember when things like going out for an ice cream or getting a burger were special treats? And when the ice cream man came to town, things really got exciting. The Ice Cream Truck and Mom's Hamburgers by Eddie Murphy. Remember when the ice cream man used to come to town when you were little? And no matter what you were doing, you would stop and lose your mind? There's something about the ice cream truck that makes kids lose it. And they can hear that song from ten blocks away. They don't hear their mothers calling them in for a bath, but they can sure hear that ice cream truck. And no matter what was going on, the ice cream man came and stopped. You'd be in some marbles or something and you'd hear... "Ice cream, ice cream, the ice cream man is coming, the ice cream man is coming." "Mom, throw out some money, the ice cream man is coming." And your mom would run to the window, and she'd be throwing change, and she'd say, "Get your father a toasted lemon bar, get your brother an ice tea, and get yourself a vanilla cone, and bring me back my change." And you'd catch all that change and run down the street, top speed, going, "Ice cream, ice cream." The ice cream man always drove an extra block. And I know he's seen us. I just think he's in that truck with his friend going, "Watch how fast I can make this kid run." And you'd be behind him doing fifty, going, "Ice cream, ice cream." He'd finally stop, and you'd be all out of breath, and you'd say, "Ice cream man, ice cream man, I want this, I want this over here, I want a toasted lemon bar for my dad, I want an ice tea for my brother, and a vanilla cone. Thank you, ice cream man, thank you, thank you, ice cream man." And then you'd get your ice cream. I remember I'd get my ice cream, and I didn't need it. I'd sing for a little while. You know how kids are. "I have some, uh, ice cream, I have some, uh, ice cream. I'm gonna eat it all, I'm gonna eat it all." And the ice cream would be running down your arm. "Ice cream, I'm gonna eat all of my ice cream." And there'd always be one kid on the side, "Lynn, get me ice cream." And kids don't care. They go, "You don't have no ice cream. You didn't get none, you didn't get none. You want to eat some of my ice cream, but wanna lick? Sike?" "You cannot have some, you cannot have some, you cannot..." "You dropped your ice cream, you dropped your ice cream." Eat it. I could drop my ice cream in a pile of dog poop and eat it. This is just sprinkles, sprinkles. Don't let your mom catch you doing that, though. If my mom caught me doing that, she'd make me put it down in one second. Put that back on the floor. And you'd drop that thing quick and say, "I wasn't gonna eat it." I have one of those mothers. No matter what you want, she has the ingredients at home. You say, "Mom, I want ice, I want supper. Get some McDonald's." And she goes, "I've got hamburger meat at home." "But I want McDonald's hamburgers." "I'll make you a hamburger better than McDonald's." "Better than McDonald's?" "That's right. When you get home, you can help mom make it." You say, "Jeez, better than McDonald's?" So your mom says, "Go and get me the big black frying pan from under the stove." So you go and get her the big black frying pan, and she says, "Now while you're in there, I want you to go in the fridge, get me the chopped meat, the onion, and a green pepper." And you go, "Ain't no green peppers in McDonald's." "I'm not making McDonald's, I'm making your mom's burger, and I need green pepper and an onion. While you're in there, get me an egg out, too." "What do you need eggs for? I want hamburgers." "Are you making egg McMuffins?" "I'm not making any McMuffin. Just get me the egg out and be quiet." And she takes the egg and the green pepper, and she chops the green pepper up in big chunks. She doesn't even dice it. Big chunks of green pepper and onion. And lets in the egg in, and puts paprika and all this junk in it, and makes a big meatball, and puts it in the middle of the frying pan. At McDonald's, their meat is this thin. Your mother's is like this. Green peppers hanging out of it, and there's a big split in the middle of it, and grease is popping out. And you're looking at it while it's popping, and you're looking at the grease in the pan, and you're thinking, "That doesn't look like McDonald's." So your mom says, "Go in the bread box and get me some bread." So you go in the bread box, and you say, "Mom, we don't have hamburger buns. All we have is Wonder Bread." "That's what I said. Get the bread out of the bread box." "You're gonna put it on square Wonder Bread." "Bread is bread. Now bring me that bread. A hamburger is a hamburger." And she takes it, and she puts it in the middle of square Wonder Bread. At McDonald's, they use round buns, and the meat covers the whole bread. Your mother's, the meat is right in the middle of the bread with grease running through the middle, making the bread stick to the plate. Now you've got green peppers hanging out of this big meatball on square bread. And you try to put ketchup on it, and it mixes with the grease and turns the bread into pink dough. And you grab it, and you get fingerprinted. Now you've got big, pink fingerprints in the dough, and you're standing there looking at it, and you try to make it look like McDonald's. So you rip the edges off around it, making it round, and you've got green peppers and grease running down your arm. And your mom says, "Now go on outside and play." And the other kids got McDonald's. They're outside going, "We got McDonald's hamburgers, McDonald's." And you're standing there with this big house burger. And kids are honest. They say, "Ew, where'd you get that big nasty green pepper burger?" And you cry, "My mom made it."
Thanks to all of you for coming in, and congratulations on your success this year.
Oh, my. I'll follow up with those outstanding presentations. The West High School Native People team finished in the top ten of fifty-two teams at the League of People, the Citizen and the Constitution National Finals in Washington, DC. More than eleven hundred students from fifty-two high schools showcased their knowledge of the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights during the three-day competition from April twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth. The team from Wauwautosa West includes David Boardman, Quinn Feller, Joshua Cundinger, Patrick McDowell, Emily Myers, Alec Redlish, Kyle Hanus, Emily Hoffman, James Proll, Julia Robles, Alexander Parks, Herschel Kistner, Alexander Polley, Allison Soder, Morgan Seigler, Michael Stagel, Catherine Bergwin, Austin Coxer, Haley Karznick, Harrison Ostrada, Anthony Stoller, Hannah Barbo, Gustav Meda, Angelo Bryan, Emily Riznousi, Laura Shunlee, Nicholas Seville, Colin Metlock, Darian Jefferson, Callahan Miller, and Adam Marz. The team was coached by teacher Chad Meteski and assisted by community volunteer Mark Young. Three seniors from East High School, Emily Blazer, Stephen St. Charles, and Sean Miller, were named National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Silver Medal Award winners by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers. Blazer was named a winner for her mixed media portfolio. St. Charles won for his illustration portfolio, and Miller won for his sculpture in the architecture category. Over a hundred and sixty-five thousand works were submitted to the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards at the regional level this year. Top works received gold keys and were entered into the national level competition. More than eight thousand gold key works of art were considered for national awards. There were two hundred national portfolios' silver medal recipients that received high honors for a body of work in art or writing. Portfolios that earn high honors receive a silver medal certificate and become eligible for earmarked scholarships from the Alliance Scholarship Partners. A select number of these recipients also received an additional one thousand dollars in scholarship. All silver-level work will be published in the National Catalog by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers. The teachers at East High School for all three students are Kim Haller and Kelly Frederick Meiser. The East High School Destination Imagination DI team has captured a state title and will now compete at the DI Global Tournament on May twenty-sixth and twenty-ninth at the University of Tennessee in Knoxville. The team from East won first-place honors in the Breaking News Challenge at the state tournament that was held in April. Members of each DI team are sophomores Aaron Zarnke, Maggie Elliott, Casey Stokes, Elise Walker, and Lorenzo Zabel, and freshman Sam Elliott. The team manager is Jim Elliott. This year's structured challenge was to design a structure from nothing except newspaper and glue that would weigh less than seventy-five grams and would hold the most amount of weight. The teams were then required to write and perform an eight-minute skit of a national newsworthy event taking place in a foreign country. In addition, all props and scenery, some of which had to be made out of newspaper, had to fit inside a box twenty-four inches by thirty inches by forty-eight inches. DI is a multidisciplinary scholastic competition that combines aspects of engineering, set design, acting, and improvisation. Every idea must come only from team members. No outside influence is allowed. The coach, known as the team manager, is not a team member and can only provide skills training and motivation. The team will present their skit at the May twenty-fourth school board meeting.
Several art students from the district have been named winners for 2010 Young People's Art Exhibit sponsored by Golden Ernsey Dairy. Kitty Burgern from East High School won first place in the Jewelry Award by the gift itself. Senior category for her work entitled History Beats Future. Winning Junior Cash Awards are Callie Boyette, Deja Nambeer, and Michael Walt from Longfellow Middle School, along with Christina Hembrook from Whitman Middle School. Senior Cash Award winners are Carly Burke, Jacob Lake, Matisha Diatta, Emily Blazer, Tori Osinski, and Caitlin Dodge, all from East High School. Special Merit Awards were won by Matthew Manherdin and Bradley Share of West High School, Mike Leffler from East High School, and Nathan Walzerowski from Longfellow Middle School. Winning artwork will be on display in the lobby of the Wisconsin Exposition Center during the 2010 Wisconsin State Fair presented by U.S. Cellular on Thursday, August fifth through Sunday, August fifteenth. The Young People's Art Exhibit showcased over five hundred fifteen pieces of artwork from Wisconsin's talented youth. More than eighty-five awards and over four thousand one hundred dollars in prize money was awarded.
The fifth-grade Future Problem Solving Team at Lincoln Elementary School finished third at the Wisconsin State Bowl Competition held at the Kalahari Resort in Wisconsin, Yount recently. The team of Janet Key, Abby Gifford, Lucy Havel, Dave Self, and Maeve Williams won for its speech presentation. The purpose of the team's speech presentation was to persuade others that the team's solution to a presented problem was worth implementing. Spits were scored based on relationship of presentations to action plan, condition of presentation, incorporation of props, verbal communication ideas, staging, creativity, involvement of participants. involvement and participation, and preparation. The Wisconsin Future Problem Solving Program was began by Phil Hart and Marilyn Hinderson in nineteen eighty-one. Over one thousand students across Wisconsin participate in competitive and non-competitive future problem solving. Teams, community problem solving, and scenario writing. The Lincoln team was coached by fifth grade teacher Maeve McGudmund.
Five of Wauwatosa students have recently been awarded the rank of Eagle Scout by Wauwatosa Boy Scouts Group Twenty-One. West junior Harrison Ostrada, West senior Timothy O'Brien, East junior William War, and East seniors Evan Lynch and Matthew Roberts have completed all requirements and received National Boy Scouts of America of Cuba for this award. These are the hundred and forty-fifth through one hundred and forty-ninth Eagle rank awarded by the Boy Scouts Group Twenty-One and eighty-eight years of scouting in Wauwatosa. The West High School varsity math team finished in second place at the Woodland Conference Math Team. Teams from the thirteen schools in the Woodland Conference competed in four events centering on various mathematical concepts. Team members include seniors and co-captains Aaron Cron and Alex Steiner, along with seniors Jacqueline Blazer, Zimbo Wang, and juniors Nick Abild, Katie Bergruin, Austin Kautzer, and Morgan Seiglaff. Cron earned a perfect score in the competition. West High School math teachers Denise Bergruin and Tom Whitworth serve as advisors for the team.
Our next item, school board officer election.
In accordance with policy zero-one-five-zero, the board elects its officers at the first meeting in May, which is this meeting. And according to that same policy, school board officers will be nominated and elected in the following order: president, vice president, treasurer, and clerk. Paper ballots have been prepared to be used in the nomination and election process. Board members are listed alphabetically on the ballots. Per board policy, the president and vice president are not eligible for more than two consecutive one-year terms, while president fee and vice president rate have served one year in the positions and therefore are eligible for a second term. We will begin the ballot with ballot for nominations for president. Mrs. Fee is the only one nominated. We will move to the vote. You know, she's the only one nominated, we still vote.
What if I decline? You started.
I'm closing. Good job. Mrs. Fee. Mrs. Fee. Mrs. Fee. A vote for someone who is not nominated. For Mr. Ray. Mrs. Fee. Next is nomination for vice president.
I believe they all need to be there.
Not for the nominations.
In order to make sure that there's not an issue, I think we should do that.
Okay. Nobody. Mr. Meyer. Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Randall. Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray.
So an extension?
There was nobody signed down. So Mrs. Randall and Mr. Ray are the two that are to be voted for for vice president. So Mr. Ray will be the recommended candidate for vice president. Now the nomination for treasurer. Mr. Croner. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer will be the recommended candidate for treasurer. Now the nomination for clerk. So we will do a second round and it'll be either Mrs. Randall or Mr. Croner to vote for. We each have three votes. Point of order, I think all candidates stay in. The current policy. Please fire something.
After each round of voting, the secretary will collect the ballots and read the total votes received by each candidate. Voting will continue with separate ballots each round until one nominee has a certain majority of votes. Any nominee may ask that his or her nominee be moved for consideration if all ballots are retrieved for each round of voting. The old policy requires anyone with a single vote to be removed from the current policy.
Is that being corrected? The second vote for clerk, Mr. Cron, Mrs. Yuffell, and Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Randall will be the recommended candidate for clerk. Just because I did not read all the nominations for president, I will read through those. No one, no vote. No one checked, and Mrs. Fee.
Mrs. Yuffell, would you make the motion, please?
Yes. It is recommended that the following persons be elected officers of the Wauwatosa School Board in accordance with policy number one-five-zero-one-five-zero for a term beginning this evening and ending in May two thousand and eleven. President Anne Fee, Vice President Don Ray, Treasurer Michael Meyer, Clerk Mary Jo Randall, and I so move.
Second.
Excuse me, I have to leave for second. It is recommended that the superintendent be appointed to act as secretary to the board, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Is there, pretty please, a little follow-up?
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuffell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuffell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
We'll move on to our action item. Which is the Student Learning Department. Mrs. Randall?
It is recommended that the school board approve the following as presented and discussed at the April nineteen meeting. The instructional resources for French, Spanish, Latin, and German, grades seven to twelve, as follows. French seven and eight, French one, Discovering French, Louvre. French two-three, three-four, four-five, Ben-Di, Yandee. German six to twelve, Deutsch acht zuhause. Latin one, Latin for the New Millennium, Latin two-three, Latin for the New Millennium Book Two. Spanish seven to twelve, Avanzamos. Second, the instructional resources for middle school Communicative Arts as follows. Comarts, grade six, Treasurers. Comarts, grade seven to nine, Elements of Literature. Third, the new courses for the twenty-ten-eleven for grade seven, Advanced English Language
with the kids in relation to professional learning communities, and how something kind of starts out as a vision and works through, and it really makes you sit back and realize what dedicated professionals we have in the district and what we're doing to make sure our kids are really learning, and it's not an issue. I mean, we're not a hundred percent where we need to be, and we'll continue to strive for that, but you can see that things are really focused on kids and learning and not what's just being taught. You can see there's a focus on collaboration, what it brings. The four secondary schools, actually, each of them did a video, and there was a lot of different funny things, aspects to it. Whitman, for example, had this, they say it was a Wolverine that looked like a... I'm not sure what it looked like.
It was their mascot.
I know it was their mascot, but they would have it sitting. I mean, there was a lot of neat things. And last bit of the relationship to the Breakfast Club, and they talked about collaboration and the different things they had done. Each of the four secondary schools just did an awesome presentation, and that's something I'll get off the board members, compile it into smaller pieces that we can share with the community and share on opening day next year as well, because I think it's important for everybody to see what's going on, and try to get together some of our reports from the elementary. Just as impressive, yes, they didn't all use, didn't make movies, but sure, it's just, it was really neat to see the consistency from building to building and the consistence. The main thing that I noticed was really a focus on all kids, and it wasn't just about a different group of students that were being successful, and the focus was on all kids, and it was, I guess I've said it before, it was exciting to see. We're also working on our district development plan, reporting all of that to Berkeley. We'll have that ready by the end of June, and that'll involve some of that data, some of the work that's been done, but I'll try to get some of the reports from elementary for you as well, so the board can see copies of that if you're interested in it. But kudos to the administrators also in the central office that put that together and led those efforts. It was an awesome couple of days.
Is there any board question or comment on that?
Yes. How are the leadership teams put together? Are those assigned by the board in total, and then did they stay the same?
You go ahead.
The principals select a building leadership team. They're asked to have representation of classroom teachers, and typically a team is about five members, and they could change. What we're looking for is leadership to be able to, we call it pay it forward, sort of pay our staff development forward. Some teams are larger, and some principals have chosen to have larger team representation, but we're looking for about teams of five.
You got it.
Well, the last few years, we've had fully full reports. We've seen the principals committee, people's reports, what they're looking to accomplish for the next year, as well as how they did in terms of work, and what they were established for the past year. With the development of the building leadership teams, we'll format that discussion and presentation change. Or will we continue to do it, depending on the principals' report.
Well, I think that's something we need to discuss, and basically, it's for you as the board to give us some direction as to what you think will be most helpful. I think once you see the district development plan and the reporting of that, I think that might help guide your thoughts a little bit as to what you want to see and what you want to do. I think it's important, and all the principals appreciate, they appreciate the opportunity to be able to share what's going on in buildings with the board and talk about successes, failures, things they need to get better at. So, I think in a roundable way, it's up to the board. We'll have to have some discussion on that before we do. I know we talked in a couple of different venues, in service in the summer, to spend more time with principals and having them come in versus the board meeting to be able to interact back and forth.
I would just like to say that the building leadership teams started to look at data in the afternoon of the celebration, and the goal this year is to have the VLTs on June 16th are going to be meeting to work on, they started to look at their data, start to work on the building goal, and then we've asked that the goals be set by August 10th so they're ready to go before the school year starts, and that then principals will be sharing those with each other on August 10th, their building goals, and then they'll be able to be prepared to share those. The building leadership teams will be setting those goals, and then they'll be prepared as a team to share the goals with their staff during the opening days of school. So, we start the year with our goals in place and have looked at the data, you know, in advance, so I think that timeline, you know, is going to...
That's much different.
Look to have more ownership and have more people involved in the actual goal setting, and to be able to get to work on the goal like right away.
Is there any community comment on the superintendent's report? Thank you very much. There is one final opportunity for public comments on non-agenda items. If anyone has a comment, please put the microphone at this time. Seeing none, I agree with the motion to adjourn this moment. Mr. Croner, is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you. All are clear?
Aye.